See, I'm concerned that they've got tax notes against all that and it's all encumbered in one big note. And I would assume that the one advantage, if they had liens against them or there were notes against them, hopefully they would pay more for adventures, but maybe there is some ventures now. How do we get any of that? Maybe not. They do have notes against their property, so they may have a new way that we could recover some of our costs. The lien hope?
Order. Start with Reverend Bryan here, man.
Let us pray. Lord, it's hot. Hot outside, it's hot in here. It's hot in our minds, it's hot on our hearts. And Lord, when it gets hot, our boiling points go over, fires begin, and reason declines. And so, Lord, we ask for coolness. We ask for coolness in this place and in our community and across the globe. We ask for your peace to be a part of hearts and our minds today. On the eve of our celebration of our independence of our nation, we are grateful that we can freely assemble tonight to speak our minds, to be present with each other, to tell those in power what we think and what our ideas are and how best to govern our community. And so, Lord, watch over our conversations. Let us be respectful, let us be mindful, let us listen, and let us do what is needed for Mineral Wells. We thank you for blessing this community, and may you continue to bless it from now on. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Legions to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under Texas's flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Start off with citizens. On the citizens' comments, we've got several folks that are wanting to speak. Rest assured, everyone that's filled out a card, I'm going to allow you to speak. In regards to the agenda item, for those that are here for annexation, I would have y'all speak when we discuss that item. Just it keeps a better flow for the meeting. So I'm going to call up people that are not going to be speaking in regards to what's on the agenda currently. Ginny Milliken, will you come up first, please? Okay, thanks. Yeah, we can wait a little bit. For those of y'all that are here on annexation, when we get to that line item, after the discussion of the council up here, we'll definitely allow y'all to speak, but hopefully we can answer some of the questions here in our discussion. Like I said, I will give each of y'all an opportunity to speak at that time. Ginny, are you ready?
Yeah. G A Milliken, 605 Northeast 39th Avenue, Mineral Wells, Texas. I just want to take this opportunity to recognize the city employees that are working on the water lines in our neighborhood. I've watched them work for over a month now in this sweltering heat, day in and day out. They have been tireless in their work. Breaks were minimal from what I've seen. They have been professional while driving the dozers, tractors, and the city vehicles around the neighborhood. I regret any past criticism of the hard work that they do. It makes me feel proud to see the dedication that they have to their job. The management of this city should be proud of what they're doing. That's it.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
Do I have to leave? Is that wise?
Leave over here.
Pretty sure everyone else here is for annexation, so like I said, I will let y'all speak when we get to that item. On the consent agenda, I think we're just going to go through items one through three, and then before we're going to move to a regular item. I understand that we'll do that now after executive session. No, I thought we were going to do consent agenda first. That's the way this is laid out.
So you need to, somebody needs to make a motion to pull item four from consent.
I make a motion to pull item four from consent agenda.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes seven zero.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes seven zero, sorry. Are we, I'm trying to understand. I thought I have it laid out on my schedule up here that we're going through executive session next.
Okay.
I'm sorry, correct. I'm wrong.
You can just move four afterwards.
Oh, y'all, if you're here to do four, let's take care of it right now, so we're not getting out of order.
Okay. How are you looking?
Excellent. We'll do number four on the consent agenda that's now a regular item of the plan agenda.
Sorry for any confusion. As you're aware, anytime a council member wants to go to any kind of training or meetings, it needs to be approved as a regular discussion item, but in front of the full council. So Councilman Wyatt has requested to attend a North Texas, North Central Texas Council Government Meeting in an upcoming, I think I have the date on here. Sorry?
July the ninth.
July the ninth. Okay, so let's come up here pretty quick. It's just a day trip, and it's mileage only, and with the mileage rate at fifty-four and a half cents per mile, comes up to a round trip of approximately seventy-five dollars.
I make a motion that we let Councilman Wyatt attend the training. Second.
Can I just go ahead and question one of the motions out there? Can I still attend this even if I'm paying for it on my own dime? Because I wanted to discuss this after y'all was given John his opportunity to speak.
So that because the motion was on the floor, that you need to complete the motion.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
I abstain.
All right, so motion passes five with two abstentions.
I'm sorry, Mayor.
Of myself and Councilman Wyatt. So my question is, now I can discuss this. Can I attend this? Because if I understand correctly, this was a previous, Mayor Mike Allen, what's his position that he held of approximately was asking Councilman Wyatt, can I attend that as well, so I can have an understanding about what's going on in that meeting? If I'm paying for it on my own?
As far as the finance part of it goes, yeah, if you're going on a trail on your own, you're dime. As far as the financial part of it, that's no problem. As far as the rest of it, I don't know.
Mike Allen's a member of it, is why he asked Doyle to replace him.
Correct. Okay, so Doyle replacing him permanently on that position there?
Just for one time, he's going to be absent.
I'd like to attend it next. Agreeable with the council, join Councilman Wyatt, so I can just be some extra ears there to listen.
It is a public meeting. You'd be way more than welcome.
Excellent. Mineral Wells City Council will begin its executive session on this third day of July 2018 at 6:09 o'clock P M. The subject matter of this executive session deliberation is as follows. Recess in a closed session in compliance with Section 551.001 Estating Sequence, I guess, Texas Government Code to Lit, Section 551.071. One, consultation with city attorney regarding pending litigation. Call civil action case number Charlie 48039 on the 29th Judicial District Court, City of Mineral Wells versus Hanks. And Section 551.071, consultation with city attorney regarding a matter in which the duty of the city attorney under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the state bar Texas conflicts with the open media act regarding statutory annexation procedures, the effectiveness of these six and related matters. Thought I mentioned it, 6:09.
And with that, we'll terminate the broadcast until council comes back from executive session.
Mineral Wells City Council has completed its executive session on this third day of July 2018 at 6:40.
Yeah, I would like to make a motion to not pursue any involuntary annexation outside the current city limits of the City of Mineral Wells.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes seven zero. For those that wanted to talk, I'll still allow y'all to have the podium if you'd like it. I'll let them speak. Yes, sir.
I would like to speak, and we won't address that issue since you just fixed it. But the rest of mine has to do with the city and the county, and I'd like for you to hear it.
Right now, honestly, it's not on the agenda. If we have time at the end, I'll allow that if that's not taken care of in one of our discussion items. Unless you have a card up here, if you have a card up here that you signed? If you do, then yes, and please come up by just overlooking.
Mayor, members of the council, thank you for what you just did. And we won't talk about that, but here's the rest of what I believe. Now, listen up, county folks. I firmly believe that Mineral Wells is our city as well, and we have an unwritten responsibility to support our city. Every merchant that took the risk of opening a business that provides goods and service depend on us to succeed. Money stays home. Sales tax revenue works with the collective good of the community. Support our city in all ways possible, sports, plays, whatever is happening, join in and show that you care. Now for a minute, everyone envisioned that our county is a huge boat, and we need the water desperately. Over here, we have the county paddling one direction and the city sitting on the other side paddling the other. We aren't going anywhere but in a circle, making the same mistakes over and over. I see indications that we've begun paddling the same direction, and we see progress. We see renovation. We see restoration, and it is refreshing. We see pride. Now, listen up, everybody, both city and county folks. My definition of pride is this. When you finally decide that having two wrecked cars and a washing machine in the front yard won't win you the Chamber of Commerce with care award, and you clean it up. Pride is when you don't throw that sack of trash out the window. You take it home. You throw it into the dumpster, and you sit side by side with the proposed annexation study. I'm asking each and every one of you to do your part and no longer say them or us. The word you're looking for is we. If Mayor Paragon proclaims the second Saturday of September as Clean the City Day, I would expect each of you to take off the boxing gloves, put on your work gloves, come do what we can with what we have. Only money can do some things, but we can make a difference. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
I'd like to open the public hearing at 6:45. Conduct a public hearing to consider replat of Alpha Bravo 701 Tango Romeo Niner. Sorry. T M B, R Y Company, number thirteen, serving in Mineral Wells, Calico County, Texas, and of course, identified man from Alpha Bravo 701 T R 36, T M B, R Y County, number thirteen, serving. Walker Pratt Park, Mineral Wells, Texas, Calico County.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, would you again open our public hearing, please, sir?
Sure, I'd like to open up the public hearing at 6:46.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, council members have some, I think, some very good news for us. We have a new business that is wanting to come into our community, kind of along the lines of what Mike was saying a few minutes ago. They have presented a plat that you have a copy of, and what I would do is also just bring to your attention the information that was provided to you on the platform this evening. It is more up to date than what you have in your packet. This particular replat was presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission at its meeting last night, July the second. The Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed the plat that's submitted and voted unanimously to recommend approval of this plat. If you were to look in the packet that was provided to you this evening on about the sixth page, you'll see the specific location. There's an aerial photo there identifying that specific location. And then the final page in that package actually is the plat drawing itself. For those of you that may not be familiar with this, this is the location of the anticipated Starbucks facility, and we are very interested in that. I think that points to some good things happening in our community, that there is interest from the retail community in mineral wells. And hopefully, this is the first of several positive things that will be occurring for us here in the near future. We have Mr. Devin Ferris with us this evening. Let's see, over there now. Okay, sorry. Devin is with the development group, the Caro, that is involved with this project. If you were to have any questions of him, I'm sure you'd be happy to answer any questions you might have. But we would bring forward to you the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission to approve this plat as presented.
Well, I was going to ask if there was any discussion, any discussion from the audience? I'll close this public hearing at 6:49.
I make a motion that we approve the replat.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you. We're looking forward to it. Y'all take care.
Moving along, we're moving on to item number eight. Consider resolution authorizing execution of agreement for professional services with Jacob and Martin LLC for web-based GIS system and website hosting.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, council members, we've been working for some period of time with Jacob and Martin Engineering out of Abilene on a web-based GIS system and website hosting service. We use these particular types of services in our code enforcement and inspections department, as well as public work. We do quite a bit of work with that. These types of systems not only allow us to do mapping and the log that are related to GIS, but also gives us a platform where our employees can go out into the field and actually do inspections and other type of work in the field. We presently are working with another vendor, but this is a much more robust system. The interesting thing about this is, is that Jacob and Martin, they're located out of Abilene, also have a Weatherford office, approached the city and asked what we were doing at present time in this regard, and what did we really need to better do our job? And what they essentially did was to build a new system based on what our needs were and what we wanted to accomplish in this particular area. So what we have here is the City of Mineral Wells being something of a beta site for this company. They have done this in two or three other communities, but they want to extend their footprint elsewhere in other cities in Texas, and they see us as a good way to do that. So we have looked at the system that they've designed. We think it is very user-friendly. We think it accomplishes what our needs are quite well. There is a cost savings to us going forward, at least as we get into year two, beyond what we're paying for the present system today. There is a one-time fixed fee of seventy-five hundred dollars to develop the system, put it in place. There's also a hosting fee of seventy-two hundred dollars per year, and the various modules that we would need to incorporate in the system would cost nine thousand dollars per year. So this compares very favorably to the annualized cost of the current system of twenty-one thousand, six hundred dollars per year. So once we get into year two, then we have the potential to save three or four thousand dollars using this system, which we believe is a much more robust and far better system than what we have today. We also have the ability to unilaterally terminate the agreement with our current vendor, so that should not be a problem. So we would present a recommendation to you to approve the resolution you found on page twenty-nine, authorizing the execution of a professional services agreement with Jacob and Martin LLC. Would also mention that there are a couple of text changes that the city attorney would like to make, so we would condition that recommendation based upon a couple of these text changes, particularly some indemnification language that we want to change in the agreement based on the city attorney's comment. So with that condition, we would present that recommendation to you to approve the agreement that you have before you this evening.
What other cities use Jacob and Martin?
I think Snyder's using them at the present time. Jacob and Martin is used by quite a number of cities across the board, mostly for their engineering work. In fact, there are several of our smaller water supply corporations that we have personally worked with that Jacob and Martin does their engineering work. So they're a well-regarded engineering firm. In fact, you may recall, those of you that were on the council at the time, whenever we solicited RFPs or RFQs, rather, for engineering services associated with our most recent bond election, Jacob and Martin did submit. They were certainly considered. Of course, we stayed with Trickle Robbins, who's been our incumbent engineer, but they are well-regarded. They work mostly in smaller communities. They do work for the City of Abilene as well.
Does this system address the limitations of our current system?
Yes. Yes, we think it will be a much, much, a significant improvement over what we have presently. Yes.
And is this correct? In here, we're currently spending twenty-one, six, so we're going to be saving about five K a year?
Yes, once we get into year two, that would be correct.
Actually, five K a month, is that correct?
No.
Five K a year, okay.
Yeah, yeah. Probably between three to five, once we get into the second.
I'm for it. Just going to take care of the limitations we currently have. We're going to save money. It seems like a no brainer.
I would like to motion we approve the resolution with the attorney's review.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes seven zero. All right. Item number nine, considering ordinance of the city council in the City of Mineral Wells, Texas, suspending operation of proposed rate schedules in the 2018 rate case filing of Texas Gas Service Company, a division of one gas company.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, council members, last month, Texas Gas Service presented a rate case whereby they were requesting a rate increase in their North Texas service area, which we are one of the cities that are located there, in their North Texas service area that includes Graham, Breckenridge, Weatherford, Hudson Oaks, and then a number of other cities in this general vicinity. In looking at the proposal for the rate increase, and we provided you with some excerpts out of the very voluminous submission that was provided to us. There are several concerns that we had with respect to this rate increase. First of all, we were concerned about the magnitude of the rate increase in itself. Secondly, we have expressed some concerns already to Texas Gas Service concerning the rate design, which they are proposing. With respect to the rate design, essentially, what we see here is that they are substantially, or they're recommending substantially increasing the customer charge or the monthly minimum charge. They are suggesting offsetting that to some degree by lowering the volumetric charge. But what you find is, is when you begin to increase the minimum monthly charge or the customer charge, you inordinately impact your lower consumption users and some of your lower end user. So we're not particularly pleased with that type of rate design. The other thing, it appears initially, is that their rate design would raise the rate for residential-class customers while providing some rate relief to commercial and industrial customers. And we're not particularly pleased with that type of rate design. That type of rate design, quite frankly, is exactly the type, if you're the utility provider, that you want to have, because that ensures you a more flat and assured revenue stream. But it has some other consequences for the customer that are not particularly good. So we have some concerns in those regards, quite frankly. Based upon railroad commission rules, and the gas company providers are regulated by the railroad commission here in Texas as opposed to the public utility commission, we have the opportunity to suspend the effective date of this rate increase for a nine-day period. We would recommend doing that, so that gives us an opportunity to sit down with Texas Gas Service, make them aware of the concerns that we have, see if we can negotiate a more favorable end result from the standpoint of this proposed rate increase. The City of Weatherford, it's my understanding that last week, they also suspended the effective date of this rate increase. And what we have talked about at this point is for the City of Mineral Wells to work in tandem with the City of Weatherford. We're the two largest cities in the service area, and typically, we have tried to negotiate between the two cities. between the two cities here, we've tried to negotiate what we think is a more desirable end result for the entire North Texas service area. So what we would recommend is for the council to consider approving the ordinance that you found on page thirty-six in your packet, that would suspend the effective date of the rate increase for ninety days, allowing representatives of the City of Mineral Wells and Weatherford to initiate negotiations with Texas Gas Service to address some of the concerns we have with this rate increase request. I might add that we do have original jurisdiction in these, in these rate cases. If there's not the ability for there to be a negotiated settlement between the service area cities and Texas Gas Service, then they do have the right of appeal to the Railroad Commission if we cannot work something that is agreeable to all the parties here. And typically, I'll just say that, you know, typically with the smaller cities in the service area, if Weatherford and Mineral Wells agree to a rate structure, typically the other cities follow suit. So we kind of set, set the pattern for, for the whole area. So again, we would present that ordinance you found on page thirty-six. It would extend the period of time, ninety days, for which the rate increase would be effective.
I make a motion to approve an ordinance of the city council or the City of Mineral Wells, Texas, ratifying a written statement by the city manager of the Texas Gas Service Company, a division of one gas Inc., suspending the operation of the proposed rate schedules in the 2018 rate base filing of Texas Gas Service Company, a division of one gas Inc. for natural gas service within the City of Mineral Wells, Texas, for ninety days following the original thirty-five day review period of the 2018 rate case filing and providing an effective date.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes seven zero. Alright, discussing, consider authorization, authorizing a bid solicitation for roof repairs to the airport Downing Hangar.
I missed my copy, so if I couldn't get it back, but I was just moving that, see, know what I was talking about. Out at the airport, we have what's called the Downing Hangar, is the, is the large hangar out there, and in the past, we've done some work, root work on it as a result of a hailstorm. However, as most metal, metal structures, metal roofs, as they get hot and cold, contract and expand, it works the screws loose. As you can see, that's a very large hangar, and seven hundred and forty-some odd feet, I believe, in length, and it also has, I believe, fifty-five skylights in it. So there is, Texas Department of Transportation Aviation Division has what's called a ramp grant, and annually, they award us up to $50,000, which is matching, fifty percent matching. So when we have projects, we can have up to a hundred thousand dollar project that they will obviously reimburse us $50,000. So we had money that we were gonna lose this year if we didn't use it, so we were looking around for projects, and we noticed that the roof needed some maintenance on it. So we put together an RFP that you have, starting on page fifty-eight, and I'm sorry that it's sixty-five pages long, but we have to cover ourselves really well when we're dealing with contractors, unfortunately. And it's pretty comprehensive. The city attorney does need to give us a final review on it though, before you approve it. Anyway, so the, so what we're asking for is contractor to come in, replace all the screws with oversized screws and the pre-washers, and replace the skylights. Those skylights are really dangerous up there, because if somebody steps on one, they go straight through to the floor, and we just don't need them up there anymore. So what they'll do is replace the skylights with metal, metal flashing. Now, before I came to the meeting tonight, I checked my email, and we'd had the, let me back up, the screws had some polymer material put on top of them years ago to seal them so water wouldn't get into them, and so according to state law, we have to test them before we do any kind of work, for asbestos. Well, I got the asbestos report before I came over here this evening, and it turns out they have asbestos in them. So that does kind of throw a monkey wrench in the whole thing. We'll have to have that asbestos-containing material abated. So it does kind of, I might talk to city manager about how we want to deal with that. I have no idea how much it's gonna cost, so I guess we're, we'll ask you to go ahead and consider approving issuance of the RFP, and we'll go ahead and issue it. However, we're going to have to deal with the asbestos issue. Now, we can't always, and one other thing you have to realize is we have to have this done by the end of August, because that's when the money deadline is. So we'll have to issue it by the end of August, or excuse me, we'll have to have it finished by the end of August, but we will have to deal with this asbestos issue that was not expected to come up positive. So I've talked to city manager, and we're gonna have to put our heads together and figure out how we're gonna take care of this, because with that big of an area, and with all those screws up there, I mean, we didn't even count the screws, but there are hundreds and hundreds and hundreds up there, and I don't know, I don't know what we're talking about as far as that abatement cost. It may be, we may have to use that money, $50,000 matching grant to abate asbestos and do the screw replacement next year, but the RFP is written in such a way that we can, we can do that if we need to.
So how would you do that? Wouldn't you be leaving open screw holes?
Well, actually, that material is so weathered and dried up and cracked and everything, it's, it's not working anyways.
And I'm sorry if you said, I'm not.
No, that's okay.
This is not one of the roofs we have replaced due to hail.
Right. It's just one we had, they did some, I'm trying to remember what they did up there. Oh, they, they did some caulking around the skylights, that's what they did, but they did not, our insurance company would not do anything more up there, because they didn't consider damage to not to do any, anything more. So that's all they did. But the skylights do need to be replaced. How old are those screws? Ah, well, that's a good question. They're probably, just by the looks of them, they're extremely weathered. I mean, I hate to hazard a guess, but I would say they're probably at least twenty, twenty-five years old, just by looking at them. I mean, that's, that's a guess, I would, yeah, they're, they're very weathered, and that polymer's dried up, in pretty bad shape.
And that hangar currently doesn't have any tenants in it?
No, it doesn't.
And it's safe keeping us from being able to put someone in it, I would think.
Well.
The hangar is fully occupied, but we have two of our tenants there that do have leaks in the, in the spaces that they occupy, and it has created problems for them. So we really do need to do this. And not, not to, not to suggest, John, is not correct on the answer as far as the age, as far as I am aware, the roof is original to the building, which is built in the sixties. So I think it's original, John, to the building, certainly hasn't been, there's been no maintenance over the last twenty-five to thirty years.
I have a question, John. Is these, these funds from Tax dot, are they are something that we can reasonably expect to be available next year?
Yes.
I think we need to start working on our properties, so.
Yes. And that was kind of part of our plan, is to work, to do this this year, and then work on other things next year, so I guess it was part of the.
If we have to keep working on that to get it finished, then I think that's what we are gonna have to do.
But you're, all you're asking is for authorization to go out for a request for proposal?
Yes. And again, city manager and I are gonna have to talk about what we're gonna do about this asbestos issue. This just, just came up.
We've had to deal with asbestos abatement in the past, or have we been successful at having contractors or locating people that could take care of that timely course? If this still comes together and can be done by the end of August, I mean, what's our history with asbestos abatement?
Oh, yeah, we've not had any problems with that. This, the company that did the asbestos testing has access to companies that do the abatement, they get somebody in pretty fast. It's just we'll have to come back for, probably have to come back for authorization due to the cost, but we'll, we'll jump on this ASAP, but again, it just comes back to a cost issue.
Is the asbestos issue separate from the skylight issue, or is the polymer on these screws attached to what's gonna be replaced?
That's a good question. I was reading over the report, and the, it's, it's sealant over the screws, but it's also in, in some caulking, apparently, so it's, 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 it's in various places. So I didn't have a chance really to, to look into it real in-depth, because like I said, I just got it, but the pictures that I've been looking at them, and I'd be glad, if you allow me to approach, I'll show you what pictures that they have in the report, if you'd like to see those.
I was just curious about the process, that either way, the abatement would have to be completed before the skylights were replaced, is that correct?
Yeah, oh, yes.
Yeah, I make a motion to authorize a bid solicitation for roof repairs to the Downing Hangar.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes seven zero. Item number eleven, consider appointments to the Mineral Wells Community Development Corporation Board of Directors and Planning and Zoning Commission.
Good evening, mayor and council members. I met with the mayor's committee on the twenty-seventh, being council members Tomlin and Underwood, and they reviewed applications from citizens wanting to serve on boards, and they recommend the following. To the Mineral Wells Community Development Corporation Board of Directors, the committee recommends the appointment of Dwayne Eaton and George Gault to new terms, which will expire July fifteenth, two thousand twenty. On the Planning and Zoning Commission, the committee recommends the appointment of Carlos Maldonado to fill an unexpired term, which will expire on March thirty-first, two thousand nineteen. And this is just here for your approval.
Make a motion to accept the recommendations of the mayor's committee and boards of commissions.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? One. Motion passes six, zero to one.
Thank you.
Item number twelve, receive presentation regarding economic development program in Mineral Wells.
It's my understanding you want an overview of what is currently going on and what has been, how we've been doing economic development, and what.
Listen.
Am I closing? Majority of the candidates that we work with are referred to us from the Chamber of Commerce. Now, these companies, candidates, companies, fall into three categories. There's the out-of-state manufacturer that has determined that all, all of a sudden, they've determined that they're selling an awful lot of product into North, North Texas, and they're paying a lot of freight. So they come in, or send somebody into the DFW area to see about either relocating there or adding another manufacturer to the plan. So they start looking around there, find it's kind of expensive, they work their way out, start calling chambers. And when the chamber gets the call, then I talk to them.
And I don't mean to interrupt, who is us, when you're saying, is it the Area Growth Council, Industrial Foundation, who is the chamber referring business to?
To me.
Steve Buescher?
Second category is manufacturer that's located in the metroplex, and when they started business years ago, they were out in the country, and all of a sudden, they're in the middle of town, and they're either being forced out, or they want out because they can't expand. They start looking around the area, they start calling chambers, looking for who's interested in having them come to town. When we get that call, chamber calls me, and I get in touch with them. Third category, existing mineral wells or Palopena County manufacturers that are either in growth mode or get acquired by a larger company, and the acquiring company comes to us and wants to know just how bad do we want to keep them here? That's just the way the game is played, those, so we work with them. Now, we also have outreach. We've worked with the Wall Street Journal, we've placed ads on both coasts, Dallas Morning News, several other out-of-town Texas newspapers, no results. We've gone to two trade shows, both aviation-related, one national in Vegas and one in Fort Worth, no results. We participated in the California industry move-out in the early nineties. California, being clever as they are, decided to run industry out of, out of the state. So they leased or rented or whatever you do, the Anaheim Convention Center, and then they brought states and cities from around the country in and put booths in there, and all the local companies wandered around, tried to figure out where they wanted to go. It's kind of clever for the companies, not, not for the state. But anyway, we got, I went three years, we had one excellent relocation out of it, it was Electromedical Products International. They came here and have, well, probably two-hundred times their sales volume at this point. They've grown a lot. Dallas Chamber, we've worked with them on half a dozen proj, projects, but nothing's come out of it. Weatherford Economic Development, they had a project going with a company called Sundance Die-Cut. The building they were gonna put them in, and Weatherford fell through, so I worked with them, and we put them in a building out, out at Walters. Then they referred, raised refrigeration over here, a small, one or two-man deal, but we found a place for them. And then they advised us when Kennedy Sausage was, had put the word out that they were going to leave Weatherford, and we started working with them, they're now Texas Best Proteins, they changed their name, and they're located at Interstate twenty and two eighty-one, basically, and we put that deal together. Parker County Economic Development, we are working with them on a few projects right now. We have referrals. True Test, a company that we got down here, referred agricultural sales company to us, and we put them in a building. Watkins Metal referred EL Farmer Trucking, and we got them a facility and put them in a facility out of Walters. Metroplex Welding referred pump and coil tubing, we put them in a building. Texas Capital Fund personnel, actually, the people that work down there, they give calls from people thinking, oh, where are we gonna go and who's gonna pay for it? They referred hydro-science technology, True Test, Pedling Nets, Watkins Metal, and Texas Building Products to us. Local realtors have brought a few companies to the table. Only two came to fruition, that was BJ Services, which is their big forty-seven-acre campus in the new, what we call the new industrial park, and then when they left, a realtor also brought in AMR, the American Medical Response. Governor's Office of Economic Development sends out RFPs on an ongoing basis, two or three a week. However, they often have specific criteria that knocks us out. They want, want you to be located on Interstate twenty or Interstate thirty-five, or they want you to be within thirty minutes of DFW, or, or they require an existing three-hundred-thousand square foot building, which we're a little short of. But anything that appears we're close to, we... But anything that appears we're close to, we send applications in. Normally, you, when these happen, you don't even know who they are. All you have is some specs that you, you're responding to. No successes with them. Once we identify a candidate, we can begin talking to them. We can define in general what they might be looking for, the size of their business, number of employees, growth potential, specific needs and requirements. That's enough information to prepare the initial written and digital proposal of the company. The proposal we send out is, does a review of the potential incentives, talks about the site location or locations that we have in the area that appear to fit their needs. Based on the discussions that we have with them, we put together project cost projections because often they don't know either. And using that information, we put together uses and sources of funds and variable assumptions. That's important because anything where I have to put a number in that they didn't give me, I explain to them where it came from, but that's our assumption. We don't know what, like, you know, what their sales tax volume because they sell so much retail, so much wholesale, et cetera. We also get into the area. Obviously, the community, we're interested in sharing our community. We tell them about the resort. We've got some nice resorts around this area, immediate area. We, we spend, well, there's nine pages of just Mineral Wells Palopena County community, what's going on here. Couple pages on ISD, Weatherford College has two, three pages, the hospital. And then we go, get down in the weeds and explain to them the Texas Capital Fund, how it works, the timing, and show contracts and workarounds to show them we're, we've done this. We know what we're talking about. Although the candidates are certainly interested in our community, our schools, our healthcare, our probability to provide a workforce necessary and housing availability, the first thing they always want to discuss is incentives. We usually include the majority of the following state and federal incentives. New market tax credits. We put this in because we're trying to get them over here to talk to us. We've never been able to complete a new market tax credit project. Now, since the city has become a CDE, a certified development entity, and hopefully we'll get our own allocation, that would be a whole different story. Because what that amounts to is like a twenty percent free equity hit to the deal. So it's, it's very good for the company. We have twenty-year property tax reduction. The capital fund and state law combine to provide this property tax savings amounting to twenty-five to forty percent. That savings is because state law says if the city owns a property and leases it to an operating company, the property taxes on the land and improvements is based on the leasehold value rather than the fee simple or the appraisal value. And that's, that's, that's how you get your twenty to forty percent savings. They have a calculation. State provides the numbers. You just plug the numbers in and see what, what their savings will be. The capital fund, what it does is it offer a interest-free twenty-year loan. So somebody comes over and sees a property that will suit their needs and it's available for four hundred and eighty thousand dollars. We make an application to the state. The state gives four hundred and eighty thousand to the city. The city buys the property from whoever owns it and leases it back to the operating company for two thousand a month. Now, that's a, that's a real sweet lease rate to start with. But at the end of twenty years, if they keep renewing their lease, they can buy it for a dollar. So it's really an interest-free loan, but it's styled as a lease. And by being styled as a lease, they don't owe that four hundred and eighty thousand dollars, if that's what the deal was. They just owe the rest of whatever three-year lease they're in. So on their balance sheet, they don't show this half million dollar debt. They just show their lease for whatever term they're in, which means they can go to the bank and have less problems borrowing money to get, buy inventory, new equipment or whatever. So it's a real benefit to the company. We also have the Texas Enterprise Project Designation. That's where the city will make an application for a designation for a given project. What that does is allow the company to recoup this, the sales tax they paid on any material that went into the construction project. And it allows them to recoup what they pay in sales tax on the electricity bill that they pay every month for up to five years. And that's all dependent on job creation. Then there's the Texas Enterprise Grant. This is the Texas Deal Closing Potent Money. Extremely political, and I tell people that right up front. And you can either have an enterprise grant or an enterprise project when you put it back together. You can't have both. We al- almost always say, let's go with the project because we've never received a grant. And we tried real hard, spent a lot of time and money on a recent deal and lost it last minute and went back to the project, but they're hard to come by. Then there's infrastructure grant funding. In addition to the loan for the real estate, actual grant funds are available to get infrastructure to the site. And those are grants you don't have to repay them. A combination of these incentives will normally equate to an incentive package from four to ten million dollars. This package requires no cash or resources, resource from the city. Historically, the packages could, would and did contain free land from the Industrial Foundation. If the company built a new facility on the land that we've given. However, we're outland, so that's no longer part of the deal. Once for the, the deal structure is agreed upon with a candidate and we do the initial due diligence, the city manager, mayor and the Industrial Foundation Board are all brought into the loop and the deal is laid out the way it appears that it could work. Additional due diligence is performed on the candidate. However, the depth of the due diligence is often reduced if the community's financial involvement is negligible. All resources and all resources sources are provided with clawback. If the city ends up required to financially participate in the project, then the whole thing has to go back for the council's approval. The reason for the lack of real deep due diligence is the fact that the banks or other financing entities involved will be doing a substantial inspection of the candidate's financial strength and background. And inasmuch as they're the ones that have the major risk, so we rely on them as somebody.
Just to clarify, do y'all have any questions, Councilman? Excuse me, Councilman?
Thank you very much.
I have a few questions if you have time, Mr. Butcher.
Sure.
So I know you started off by saying that these referrals that come in to you, and I'm trying to understand how our structure works. Is it the I F, Industrial Foundation? Because our, our budget line item is fifty thousand dollars and that goes to the Industrial Foundation. So are you with the Industrial Foundation or the Area Growth Council? Can you explain how that works?
Yeah, I'd like to go over that again with you. The Industrial Foundation and the city and the county and the chamber got together twenty-five years ago and said, we have a common goal. That's economic development. And so they decided to create the Mineral Wells Palopena County Area Growth Council. That is a joint venture. As I said before, it doesn't really exist other than being an operation that everybody's involved with. One person from each of those entities is on the steering committee for the Area Growth Council. And those four individuals, and their positions, not people. Those four individuals choose a fifth and it has been for the entire time, whoever was in charge of the local newspaper.
Who is on that steering committee for the city?
The mayor.
Myself?
I believe that is your position, yes.
So, so that mean I have access to every deal that y'all have done so we can, we're trying to figure out a better way to do economic development. So would I have access to come and look at all the documents y'all have done in regards to the past twenty-four years?
You can certainly try.
Well, I mean, I'm asking if I can.
Well, you can. I don't know how many documents will be available, but you can certainly.
Because I, I know you mentioned here that y'all do a clawback in deals and I haven't really looked into many deals, but something I've looked into it and I didn't see any clawback in there.
I, I would like to correct you and that you saw the clawback with the signatures. It just got thrown out, as I told you. There was a clawback deal and it was thrown out because the bank required that to finance the overall package.
Interesting. Well, I have plenty of questions if you would like to stay and answer a few of them. In regards to, if we're trying to figure out a better way to do economic development, I think it's good to understand how we've been doing in the past and make sure that this is the best for our city. I'm understanding Lance, you're, you're in full agreement with the way we've been doing our economic growth and development? Because I would, I would look at some of the information, documents I have and questions in regards to Mr. Butcher and have a lot of questions and concerns. But if, if you're in a hundred percent agreement with him, I will, I will back off and, and defer to you.
Not entirely sure what your question is, man.
I'm asking, if you have a hundred percent confidence in the Area Growth Council and Mr. Butcher, then I will hold that, hold back my questions and my documents. The documents I'll be presenting later on, but I'll hold back questions for tonight. I just want to understand what your position is.
I think the Industrial Foundation, Steve working as a part of that, have done a good job for this community. I think you have to look at it in the perspective of the history of this entire effort. I think the resources that have been provided to it. The Industrial Foundation has put in far more money, correct me if I'm wrong, Steve, have put in far more money into economic development into this community over the last sixty years than has the city or the county. So I think we have to look at some of this, you know, within that perspective. So I think there's been quite a bit of success over, over time. Could we look at some other avenues and some other approaches? Certainly, that's, that's a reasonable thing to do, I would suspect.
So, so in your opinion, you think they're doing a good job? And also, I assume that that be that you have confidence in them and let my questions end here.
Oh, yes. I think they have done a, a good job over time. Again, I think you have to look at the historical perspective and the amount of resources available to the entire effort.
With, with, with all due respect to the mayor, I would like to mention that I, I do have a concern about the use of the word better in terms of looking for someone to do a better job before we do and then, you know, a comprehensive look at our economic development because, you know, if I'm an employee and somebody comes to me and says, you know, we're looking for somebody to do a better job, there's already a language of judgment put on the Minerals Industrial Foundation slash Area Growth Council. And I, I think that we need to be open-minded here and say, I believe, and this is just my personal opinion, I believe that, again, we need to be open-minded in the consideration of our Economic Development Task Force and open-minded to the fact that this organization has done the best with the resources it has or it hasn't. And so I, you know, I just question the use of that word better as potentially judgmental too quickly.
Yeah, only your active and that assessment, I am making a judgment that I do not think it has performed well at all. In fact, I think it borders on broad, in my opinion.
You're entitled to that.
Thank you very much. Anybody else have any other questions? I'll hold to my promise to Lance.
Thank you for your presentation, Mr. Butcher.
Do any citizens have any comments?
This wasn't a public hearing.
I know that. You can go ahead and come forward. You need to keep it to no more than three minutes, sir.
My name's Caleb Shipman. I reside at fifty-two eleven Beletta Drive, Mineral Wells, Texas. Title seven, Practices and Professions Related to Real Property and Housing. Subtitle A, Professions Related to Real Estate. Chapter eleven oh one, Real Estate Brokers and Sales Agents. Subchapter A, this chapter may be cited as the Real Estate License Act. The commission may suspend or revoke a license issued under this chapter or take other disciplinary action authorized by this chapter if the license holder, while engaged in real estate brokerage, makes a false promise that is likely to influence a person to enter into an agreement when the license holder is unable or does not intend to keep the promises, promise, pursues a continued and flagrant course of misrepresentation or makes false promises through an agent or sales agent, advertising or otherwise. If you look at the AGC website, N W E D dot org, which Mr. Butcher runs, operates, or is in charge of, I assume. Out of the sixteen industrial properties on that site, four of them are listed correctly. Eight of them have incorrect or incomplete information and four of them have been sold for some months. That's a twenty-five percent accuracy rate for the city-sponsored site. So yeah, we need to do better. In addition to that, I hold in my hand a packet, a booklet, of the Precision Ammunitions Company. Here's what irritates me about the Precision Ammunitions Company deal that Steve Butcher put together. In this packet is a home located on fifteen acres. Actually, correct acreage would be fourteen point five five. How do I know that? That's my home. My house. That's Steve Butcher put inside of a packet to give away to a company. Are you hearing me? My house. If this was yours, you'd be pissed. He broke the law. He's in violation of the Texas Real Estate Licensing Act, of which I will be filing a complaint against him and I will win. We need to do better. We've gone too far. The man makes seventy to eighty thousand dollars a year. Taxpayer dollars out of this city come fifty thousand dollars. We can do better. No questions asked. There is no reason why a man should ever put in a packet without ever talking to a person about his own personal property, ever giving him an offer, ever giving him representation. It's the law. It's called Texas Real Estate Licensing Act. Read up on it. Every person in this room can do their own research if they choose to. But this was my house that he put into a packet of the proposed site for the Precision Ammunitions Company. And it included my home. I have more pictures of my home, aerial site pictures that, I, I'm just blown away that we would continue to give this man money, taxpayer dollars, for economic development when he does things like this. I'm appalled at even this council or even the city manager who would stand behind the man who does this.
Mr. Mayor, may I respond?
No, I think we're done.
I think that the man deserves a right to answer that allegation since we're already out of order anyway.
Fair enough then. Caleb, if you want to respond to this, you're welcome to after this.
The poor man's house was not his house when it started.
That's not true.
Stand by. I'll, I'll actually speak to this. I actually have the documents to, to actually prove that you're lying about that.
Well, you've got bad documents. I was working with Mr. Presley who owned the entire property. He was trying to sell the entire property when the ammunition manufacturer wouldn't come up with any money to hold it. He went ahead and sold it to the good man.
This is not a trial and I don't believe it's the council's. We don't have the authority to even resolve this issue. So I.
We'll move on to the next title. Thank you.
It was December twenty fifteen. I owned my house since April fourteen.
This is absolutely embarrassing.
Item number thirteen, Discuss and Take Possible Action on Economic Development Task Force.
Yes, at its meeting on June fifth, council directed me to take applications from citizens interested in serving on an Economic Development Task Force. I took applications that were due by June the twenty-ninth, which was last Friday. By last Friday, I had received twenty-four applications and I've submitted all those to you through email. And I just need the council to give direction on how the selection process will take place.
I personally would like to see everybody that applied and have a chance to have input in regards to the economic development of our city would be what I would prefer to see happen.
I have a suggestion and I'm open to hear anybody else's suggestion. I would, you know, typically our committee's procedure is that the Mayor's Committee on Boards and Commissions reviews applications and in this instance, I would suggest that we follow that process and ask those individuals, which would be Councilman, Councilman Tauntland and Mayor Protim Underwood, to develop, develop a criteria that, you know, to develop a schema for qualifications to serve on this committee and bring your recommendation to the council on, at the next meeting. And this would be the place also at the dais today for us to say, you know, as council people, we are representatives of the people of our constituencies and to say, to provide them information with which applications we did solicit as, in our opinion, representative. And we did discuss, I believe, I mean, there was no motion on this matter, but seven to nine individuals serving on the committee.
Beth, I appreciate that approach and I do believe seven to nine is the right number. Twenty-four people never come to a decision. However, I think due to the importance of this and the magnitude of the response, I think we may need to, to look at that a little differently. If we want to work on what we think a scoring sheet should be, what we believe is important in that person, we could score applications or we could do it a little more simply and allow this council to review those applications and to vote on the seven or nine, whatever we decide members they believe would be the most qualified. I mean, if we make this too complicated, it'll take us forever and we want somebody else by the end of the year. But if we don't do due diligence and pick the right team, then we haven't gained anything either, so.
If we do that as a council, is it possible to do that in executive session so we're not putting everybody on display? Or would that be appropriate?
Let me look at that and see if an exception would apply in that case.
I wouldn't be for that. Sorry. I, I mean, I agree, Steve. Let's, let's, if twenty-four is too many, well, let's have all of them there and then the leaders will rise to the top on it. If we're going to sit up here and make a criteria for who's going to be essentially on this board right now with growth, then I think it's much, much better and wiser to go ahead and take all the applicants that have applied, let them put their collective voice in together and we'll find out what leaders are there and what options they provide. I'm not sure why y'all would be opposed to accepting everyone that put their application in.
Well, I thought we were going to keep it to a smaller number. I think you had suggested the seven originally.
We were also told it would take a long time to get seven and we've got three times that amount.
True. So I, I think we should do just similar to what she said, a scoring, or something similar to that. Where we write down seven to ten names, kind of see where it goes as far as who gets the most. I don't know. Most council members saying that this person needs to go on the committee.
Give me an idea what your scoring criteria would be.
Yeah, I don't know.
You know, one of mine would be they can't be part of the previous Economic Growth Committee. If they have any ties to that, then I would think that we shouldn't have them on there.
Yeah. That's good. Yeah, I mean, I, I don't know what mine would be, but I think twenty-four is too many.
I do think experience is important here because it's not a committee of opinion, but a committee of fact-finding and, you know, economic development is complicated.
Let me present a, a possible solution. If we have twenty-four, let's divide it and put eight people on each team, have three separate teams meeting and let all three of them, so we don't have group thing going on, all just come up with solutions.
Well, we, we do plan to hire, hire a consultant to work with this group as, as a unified body and the goal is to seek unity. And I think that, I, I think that, I mean, I think qualifications that are important are, you know, experi, experience in business. I think that absolutely we should have. I mean, if you wouldn't, if you excluded people who'd sat on the board of the Area Growth Council and the Industrial Foundation, that would exclude myself or anyone who actually had any factual information about the workings of those organizations and I do think that that is valuable knowledge to have. So I think experience in, again, business, community organizations, working with a group, you know, education. I think, I mean, I think we do have some criteria and that we could select from.
So, I understand you correctly, Councilwoman Watson, you're implying that we're going to go ahead and move forward with hiring a third-party outside person to come in and help with this?
It, it's on the agenda for consideration by the council.
Correct. I know. We'll, we'll get to that. I have my questions about that. In regards to how we give directions to, maybe, on these twenty-four, why is it that we're opposed to having all twenty-four? Y'all are afraid that there's too many people offering ideas and suggestions? Or is it that they're?
No, it's not that at all. It's the fact that a committee of twenty-four is very hard to manage and it is very hard to get people to agree and to be unified. And I've never seen a committee of twenty-four being productive.
I think, I think it's due diligence to do a screening, screening process for appropriate as to the task at hand. I mean, such screening exists for, you know, committees down to the cemetery board and the Planning and Zoning Commission. It is appropriate to do a screening and scoring process. And I think that, you know, I, I think, I mean, I'll, I'll be honest with the individuals who I solicited their application and asked them, said, you know, you need to be a part of this process. I, I asked people who I thought were independent thinkers and not beholden to anybody. And I think, you know, I, I think that we can develop and put together a professional committee of independent thinkers and I don't think that past experience with the foundation or the Chamber of Commerce or anything of that nature implies that someone is incapable of independent thought.
I agree. And my history is that a committee of twenty-four would be extremely difficult to not only get a decision out of, but just to get, gather up. The, the other issue I have with, with that is, you know, if you go back to our bond committee, it, that number of people is just extremely difficult.
How many?
You know, times have changed. Economic development is not what it was in the nineteen fifties or the sixties when the Industrial Foundation was formed and wanted to begin to do some things for Minerals. Obviously, you know, that model may be expired. There is lots of models out there to look at. There is a host of information. There's volumes and I, I tend to agree with, with those that think a committee of seven or nine is, is probably about the right number to do this.
Two questions in response to that. So the folks that are part of the Area Growth Council using that outdated model, would we then be choosing people that are limited into that train of thought of using that same model and therefore limiting our possibilities for economic growth? And number two, how many people signed the Declaration of Independence? I had to look it up because I didn't remember. There's fifty-six. And I would think that we can come together as a town. We have plenty enough time to get this right. And I don't see any reason why twenty-four people can't come together. And the other powerful solution is just to separate them, split them, put them in groups of, three groups of eight, like I said.
I, I tend to disagree. I mean, I would be happy to receive that information. I just, in, in my mind, I don't, I don't really see it working. With regard to the outdated model, since I brought the terminology up, I'll expound on that. You know, it, it might have been what they had to work with back then. And they have adapted and used the incentives and what was available to them. What's available today is different than what was available then. I believe they're more than willing to adapt. You know, I'm not saying they won't be part of whatever this new thing is. But, you know, I said when I ran over a year ago that we needed to, to do more than just what that group is doing. You know, whether that means that they're a part of it or not, I don't know. That's why we're putting together this task force for economic development for this community is very, very important. And we need to do this right. And in order to do it right, it's going to take a little bit of time. And it's going to take some professional help. And so I'll, I'll agree. It makes it, it makes it really difficult to have three separate groups meeting when they need to funnel into a single professional advisor that we're hiring to, to help steer us down the right path. And I believe that's where we're going.
I agree with Tammy in that two people trying to choose or pick any of these individuals would be a mammoth responsibility. I mean, it's, when, when you do it just for local boards, that, and I understand they're all important, but I feel the pressure when you, you look through four or five candidates for one or two positions. What we just did, what we just announced tonight, the weight of that is very, very heavy. And I think we can come up with a criteria and a method to choose the best, or what we feel is the best, seven or nine, to take care of this important work for the city. I think that's a better option for me personally and I can only speak how I feel.
So I would like to make a motion that Gerald and I work together in coming up with the criteria that we believe would be important. That way that takes it out of your hands. And then we could pass that criteria around to the council members and have them write applications and submit nine individuals that they believe would serve on economic development.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Any abstentions? Motion passed as six to one.
Thank you.
All right. That falls closely to discussing, consider authorizing a request for qualifications, solicitation for comprehensive economic development plans services.
Well, we tried to anticipate what you might want as far as an economic development plan and a consultant to, to do that. So we put together the best that we could on an RFQ request for qualifications. Please feel free to give us any input. I'm sure you had a chance to read through this. I've had experience with hiring economic development people in the past. So I put, put my experience to work here and, and it should all be self-explanatory in the plan I wrote out. Again, happy to answer questions, solicit input. This is somewhat incomplete because the city attorney does need to, to, to find, give us a final blessing on it.
I have a question then. Do we have anyone currently procured with city funds that could take over this position? I'm thinking in particular of Wes Jury, why he would not be considered saves, oh, I'm trying to save money here. We're trying to save money for the city. It seems that if we've already procured services, is that an option we're looking at to say, hey, would you consider helping to guide this ship?
Well. Yeah, okay.
Wes Jury is one of the, one of the resources that we will probably reach out to. If you were to look at the proposal that you have before you, we will be sending this to at least five or six, if it is the council's desire to go down this path, to five or six economic development consulting firms that we do have some information on. One of the things that we will do is to also contact Wes Jury. One of the things, and I certainly hold Wes Jury in very high regard. We contracted with him on a couple of different occasions. But I think we would at least like to look at what else is out in this realm as far as economic development experts that have done this on a number of occasions. Wes Jury certainly can be one of those, yes.
How much money are we considering on this?
We do not know at this present time. It could be somewhere between, I would think a minimum number is probably twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars. That would be our best guess at this point. The way this process ultimately works, if the council wishes to proceed with this, is that you would solicit or approve the solicitation of the RFQ that you have before you. If you have an opportunity to examine the RFQ, there is no indication of pricing or cost for the services to be rendered. What the RFQ process allows us to do is to have qualified professionals respond back to us and allows us to determine who we as the city believes will provide the best service based on a very skeletal scope of services that you have in the RFQ in front of you this evening. And based on negotiations with who is determined to be the most qualified, then you negotiate a final scope of services and of course, that has an impact on what the ultimate cost would be that you would negotiate. But our best guess at this point is probably a minimum of twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars. It could be as high as forty to fifty. We just don't know at this point. And based on the RFQ process, which the state requires us to do in soliciting professional services, you don't put them out as a bid per se, like if it was a building construction contractor, what have you, where it's the lowest responsive bidder based on very clear specifications. Here we're looking for responses for qualified professionals to respond back to us, show us what their qualifications are, what their history is, what their pedigree is. And then based on who we think as a community can best provide the service, we sit down with them and provide more detail and scope of services, which obviously affects the ultimate fee structure.
I have a question. I would, I was at the meeting back in March or April where you, there has been a re-approved agreement for Mr. Jury and I would assume that doing something, taking on something of this nature is not in the agreement. Like, I mean, that would be.
No.
It's not just included. It'd be extra money.
Yes. So this would be a much more in-depth scope of services for him than what is currently being contracted in tandem with the Chamber of Commerce who we're working with on that contract, so.
I think, I mean, I, I think one of the things that I think would be great is to see which firms out there may have worked specifically and well, come up with some good results for a, a city such as ours. I mean, Wes is, I have a high regard for him too. His experience was in Arlington and El Paso. And I, I think it would be great due diligence to do this RFQ and see if we can get somebody who would be the best fit for Minerals.
And again, if I might just add, as John mentioned, not knowing what the council's intentions might be at this point, and knowing that this is an issue that the council appears to want to begin to address timely, we went ahead and put this RFQ in the packet so that if there was the intention of the council to proceed in this direction, then we could begin that process rather quickly, because the RFQ would be out for solicitation for roughly three weeks or so. There is a time period that it would take to get some firm under contract, if that's how the council wishes to proceed. So we felt like we would give you the option, certainly at this point, to take a look at that even prior to establishing a committee or selecting a committee that would be a part of this process, again, if that's the direction the council wishes to go.
Well, I think we need to solicit that, just so we know what we're looking at expense was. It may be something there's no way we can afford, but until you solicit, we're not going to know what we're dealing with. So it's no harm, no foul to solicit, so that we understand what that looks like.
Yeah. Until there's a project contract actually executed, there is no commitment by the city as far as any expenditure of funds or any commitment to do anything with a provider or with a...
Yeah, this RFQ just gives us the opportunity to see what resources are available to us.
Yes, that's correct.
Can you explain to me, because sometimes, maybe I'm falling behind, help me understand that when we're looking at sending out this RFQ, are we trying to solicit person or are we trying to solicit the plan? Because if we're trying to submit or solicit a plan for it, someone to give us the plan, then there's no point in having the task force. Task force is there to provide us with the models and say, hey, here's the options you have. So are we looking at this item that we're currently discussing to have someone as the head leader over it?
Um, what, it's my understanding that the RFQ will give us what consultants are basically available and willing to work with us based on a scope of services that we ultimately will define, and it, you know, our scope of services in my mind is, you know, let's review our economic development program and its structure, and then that, it would be my understanding that whoever we hire would work with the task force to develop, you know, either a new model or a, you know, modified model for economic development.
I think the task force works in tandem with the either individual or the firm, because, you know, our task force, they're going to have information about our city, our area, the resources that that consultant's not going to have, whereas I would assume we expect that consultant, they work together.
I view, sorry.
No, go ahead.
I view this individual in the same manner as Wes Jury. This is the person guiding the work of the task force, the logistical work. The people of the task force will determine what to recommend, but I view this person as that outside expert who guides the discussion. Because, you know, if the task force wants to do something that is illegal for economic development in Texas, that person's going to know that and say, hey, that's a waste of time. So I think that's kind of the role I see this individual taking, or firm.
Sorry. Would we consider then that when we come to a task force, allowing them to have the option to choose who they're going to, basically follow as their leader, and then help them in, because we're basically setting out a request for qualifications, maybe selecting someone and saying, hey, here's your leader task force, and we're pretty much already set their direction for them. I don't know, I have a lot of confidence in the people of Mineral Wells. It seems like we could have them come together as a task force and say, you know what, we want to solicit, and we want to go out and get someone to help lead us in this.
I'm a responsible person in the council.
Mr. Mayor, if I might address that. Typically, the role of the consultant in these kinds of circumstances is they come in, and one of the first things that they do is try to evaluate, you know, what the current circumstances are in the community, but also try to determine what the goals and objectives of the community might be. And then, I hate to use the word facilitate, but help that committee and that community reach the goals, the economic development goals that they have identified. Now, as a part of the envision Mineral Wells process, we're a little bit ahead of the game, I believe, because we have established some goals. I think you met with the Economic Development Committee on several occasions. There are some goals and objectives that have already been identified, utilizing Wes Jury and his expertise there. So I think we're a little ahead of the game from that standpoint, but whenever you have a consultant come into your community, typically their goal is to help you get to that point and use their expertise to tell you what tools are available, what structures might be best for your community, to basically evaluate what we've been doing over the last many years. So the role of the consultant is not and should not be to come in and tell you what you're going to do. We don't need that, and that's typically not what consultants should be doing. They need to respond to what we see as the opportunities, the strengths, the weaknesses, the objectives that we have as a community, and tell us how best to get to where we're accomplishing those goals and objectives. So I don't think, you know, from my perspective, I would not want to have a consultant coming into our community that would say, you know, here's what you need to do. I've never met with anybody. I've had no contact with the community, but here's what you need to do. That's not who we're looking for. We should never entertain securing the services of someone that does that, because they need to develop a product that puts us where we want to be. And every community is different, and every community has different goals and objectives, and that's one of the roles of a consultant, to determine what those are, and then help either the council, the committee, whomever it may be that's involved in this process, to reach, you know, how do we best reach those goals and objectives. So you certainly don't want to have a consultant that comes in with any preconceived notion as to what this community needs or should do.
I'm just concerned about spending money when, as you mentioned, envision Mineral Wells, we've already identified the strengths, weaknesses. We've done spot analysis. We know what we're pursuing economically. We know what clusters we're going after. I just, I'm concerned, I'm okay with sending out a request for it. I'm just concerned down the road that we're going to be spending more money to duplicate what's already been done, and so...
Well, I'd address that as well, Mr. Mayor. There are a lot of economic development tools that are out there, and I think part of what we need to determine, this is my personal opinion, is we need to determine what can work best and how do we meld all of those tools together, and what ultimately is the best structure organizationally going forward. You know, Councilman Light may comment about, we've been working with a certain structure over the last many, many years. That's true. There have been new elements introduced into our structure, if you will, 4B sales tax being one of those. That's something that is new to the environment over the last three years or so. So, yes, I think we are ahead of the game. I think you're exactly right. Through envision Mineral Wells, we do have some good direction established, so hopefully that, I would hope, would shorten the process and hopefully save us some dollars from that standpoint if we deal with a consultant, and give them some good direction as to what the community's desires are going forward on an immediate basis. But there are still many questions as to how do we structure this, how best to structure this given our community. And those are things that I think would certainly behoove us to get someone from the outside who has helped structure these and other communities, tell us, given where you want to go, given the resource, and this is another thing too, that does not come to bear in most of the discussions. This is an activity, economic development is an activity that has not been supported adequately by the institutions of this community ever. And that's just my personal take on that. The Industrial Foundation has, as I said earlier, I think you can find that they have put in much more money over the years in this whole process than has either the city, the county, or any of our other public institutions. Can that continue on? Is that model still relevant, or do we need to do something different, and does 4B give us some alternatives that we have not had in the past? And I think those are all questions that have evolved over time, that we would certainly want someone, I would think, a fresh set of eyes to come in and say, I see what you've been doing. Here are some options that you might want to consider moving forward. And I think, not to put our city attorney on the spot here, the state over a period of time has established some additional programs that were not in place twenty, thirty years ago that also give us some other options. So I think there are a lot of questions that could be answered if we bring a qualified professional in here and just give us guidance, not to tell us what we have to do, but what we may think is appropriate for us to do.
I love the, I was, I am maybe the number one advocate for an outside perspective because, you know, on this group, you are going to have people who have been involved in these organizations in all likelihood, and we need somebody from the outside who just, you know, we're paying them to tell us what to do, and they're going to say, you're wrong. You know, you've been doing it wrong, and there's no, there's no, and there's no vested interest. And we also might have skeptics on our economic development task force that thinks that everyone who's been involved in economic development is corrupt, and the consultant can say, well, you're wrong too. You know, I think that that is vital. So with that, I would make a motion to authorize a request for qualifications, authorizing an RFQ solicitation for comprehensive economic development plan services.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes seven to zero. All right. I have number fifteen, City Council discussion with staff concerning any action required by state staff as a result of any item on, say, tonight's agenda. If jogged on memory, and I don't have my note, but the lady that came up and spoke last week on the smoking, I don't know, council wanted to consider that. Y'all recall what I'm talking about?
Carol Wright.
Carol Wright.
Thank you. Is that something?
Yes, did you have enough?
Well, I was just going to say that I was talking to the city attorney earlier this evening, and if the council has some interest in that, what we can do is secure copies of what we think are some reasonably successful ordinances and get those in the council's hands and let y'all review them, see if you have an interest in pursuing that, and we can certainly provide y'all with possibly three or four other city ordinances that seem to be working, and then let y'all react to that, if you would like for us to do that.
I like that idea.
Okay.
I have a question regarding the development of the scorecard. Who would be, who would be doing that? When would we be receiving it? What would be the delivery mechanism?
From Geraldine?
Yes.
I was going to see if he could meet maybe Monday or Tuesday, so we could talk over that. And once we have the list, then we will get Peggy to send it to everyone and ask you to use that in making your writing.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Excellent. This meeting is adjourned.
Hey, everyone. With that, I think we're going to end tonight's broadcast. Appreciate everybody watching.